Thirty-four, so I'll call to order the December 2nd, 2021 North St. Paul Planning Commission meeting. Lisa, did you want to do the roll?
If everyone could mute their microphone until you're ready for speed. We're getting an echo. Commissioner Chair Elaine Barton.
Here.
Commissioner Patrick Lees.
Here.
Commissioner Eric Brenner.
Here.
Commissioner Rick Gelman.
Here.
Commissioner Vice Chair Commissioner John Mungy is absent. Council liaison Lisa Wong is, was going to participate by Zoom, but then I got an email from her today that she was unable to attend to the microphone. She's absent. Commissioner Andrew Weiss.
Here.
And Commissioner Alan Warren.
Here.
All righty, we have a quorum. So first item of business is to adopt the agenda. Everybody have the newest agenda? Anybody want to make any changes, additions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Rick. Second by Al. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None. We have agenda. Then we have approval of minutes and the first is our October 7th, 2021 minutes. Anybody have any changes or corrections? Who is that?
That's Rick.
Rick. Don't forget to put your mic on when you're...
Thank you.
Yep.
On page seven of forty-six, uh... The, uh, let's see. Motion to adopt agenda should be... Just a minute.
I think it should be what it says in the second sentence.
Motion carried.
To provide the...
Yeah, there was something there that was kind of goofy about it. I crossed out, um, improvement plan. No, I underlined forward, you know, something.
I think the motion was to, um, uh, forward the planning commission findings to the city council, not to adopt the agenda. But, right?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Sorry.
That was the one I had too. That's why I know.
Okay.
Um, anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the October 7th, 2021 meeting minutes. Moved by Andrew. Second. Second by Eric. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All righty. Then we have the October 21, 21 joint meeting minutes for the EDA Planning Commission meeting. Any changes or corrections on those?
Just one quick correction. I'm listed as council member-wise twice on here as opposed to commissioner-wise.
Well, they didn't tell you that little promotion.
Oh, well, okay then. Never mind. Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? Did you find that in there, Lisa?
All right, it was, it's page fourteen. Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the October 21st joint meeting minutes. Moved by Al. Is there a second? Who was that? Patrick. All righty, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? All righty, those are approved. Then before, let's just do this real quick before we move on to meeting open to the public, but in case you all don't know, Al has an announcement to make. Did you want to make an announcement, Al? This will be Al's last planning commission meeting after...
We were trying to figure that out.
Many, many, many years. How's that?
Did you hear any better things?
Yeah. Well, you know, I do, we do have a little certificate to give you, Al, just to recognition of your contribution and the many years you've put in on the planning commission, so let me just come down and give that to you. But I wanted everybody to know, this is the last time you're going to be able to beat up on Al in public. In private?
We'd also like to have Al as our fifth of honor at one of our upcoming council meetings, so when we get that date determined, I'll sort of pass out and believe that council meetings, but then that council meeting. Not enough space, and you're probably right about that.
Well, yeah, he was the detail guy, finding all those measurements that didn't add up and big deal was staying on top of the lot size for many years. That was your baby for a number of years, so enjoy your retirement from the planning commission. All righty, then we'll move on to meeting open to the public. Do we have anybody on Zoom? No?
Yes, I actually... Oh, that's right. No, we do not have anyone from the public.
Okay. We only have one person sitting back there, but I'm pretty sure he doesn't wish to say anything. He's here to supervise, I guess. Then we'll go on to our first item of business, which is a public hearing. It's consideration of a preliminary plat and final plat for the Burwell addition. So Brandy, are you going to take that one?
I will.
Don't forget to turn your mic on if it's not on.
Thank you. Let me figure out how to share the screen here. Oh, great, thank you. Oh, yep. I'm just a little slow. Okay, thank you, commissioners. Um, the Burwell addition is a city-initiated project where the city submitted a land registration to Ramsey County to clarify ownership of this block between Margaret and Charles and Sepulveda and Highway 36. The existing lot configuration, which you can see on the screen, is the result of numerous past plats and land conveyances. As you can see on the right, or I'm sorry, on the left, lot lines overlap existing structures and Centennial Drive, and they do not reflect the land ownership. So to remedy this and clean up lot lines, the city entered into a stipulation agreement with the property owners in the block, and that will legally clear up the title for each property owner. The plats, which you have before you tonight, are the legal mechanism to map the legal descriptions in that agreement. In addition to clearing up the ownership, the plating process will also establish the right-of-way for Centennial Drive. So this project is a tad different than a typical plating process in that there is no subdivision involved. In fact, per statute, lot consolidations such as this are not subject to the city's subdivision review authority. So the plat is brought before you tonight for two reasons. There's two code sections in the municipal ordinance that require plats be reviewed by city, or sorry, reviewed by plan commission and approved by city council, and street dedications must also be approved by city council. So to reiterate, there are no new buildings and no public infrastructure proposed as part of this plat. This item is brought forward as a matter of procedure. However, we thought it was prudent to demonstrate how the lot layout will comply or not comply with the zoning ordinance. The subject block is zoned MU1 and MU3. There are eight existing structures, four of which have some existing nonconformities, either lot width, size, or setbacks. So the replat will leave four buildings as nonconforming. We consulted with the city attorney and were assured that the nonconformities are not an issue, as this is simply a memorialization of the existing, of the existing ownership. So variances are not required at this time. Further, the zoning ordinance will allow the continuation of these legal nonconformities as long as they are not expanded. So we had our notifications sent out to the owners within 350 feet of the plat. Public hearing notices were sent to the paper for publication for both the plan commission and the city council meeting, and then we also notified Ramsey County, the Minnesota Department of Transportation, and the DNR. We did not receive any, any negative comments or no comments at all from those groups. So with that, staff recommends approval of the addition, the Burwell addition preliminary and final plats to memorialize the August 2001 stipulation agreement of the same area. And that is the conclusion. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Did you say, did you say 2001?
The, yeah, the stipulation was executed, so signed by all parties in this. Mm-hmm. But the original agreement was probably started, I don't know the year, but about 15 years ago. Oh, I'm sorry. Twenty, this year.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that that was.
Thanks, Eric.
Anyone else? Still have to open the public hearing minute at six forty-four. And do we have anybody?
No, we do not.
Online, because there's nobody here, so I'll just close the public hearing minutes. And back to the planning commission. And as I look at it, seems really just housekeeping type of work.
And it was in the works for the remaining years, probably going back to 2001. Maybe before, yeah.
Oops, I had my mic off. I apologize. And here I am nagging other people. So does anybody want to make a motion then?
I do have a question.
Oh, yes.
I have a question about drainage and utility easements, because there are, the, the old lots, if you will, are all shown on the documentation and all of the old drainage and utility easements and everything, but it's a little difficult to identify what, what are they doing to change that stuff, the easements? If, because I'm assuming they aren't all, all those easements are not necessarily remaining, or are they?
I don't believe that this is releasing any of the existing easements. Eric, do you have that information on hand by chance?
I think if you consult the final plat, on the final plat, while it's quite busy because it also contains the previous ones, any drainage utility easements that will remain after the recording in the final plat are shown on the final plat. So, and I'm trying to remember, um, I think it's the ones up close to 36 are the only ones that are remaining. If you look up towards Lot 1, Block 1, there is a drainage utility easement that's 15 feet wide, basically parallel to 36, and then it turns and kind of goes straight east. So all drainage utility easements previous will be vacated and replaced with the ones shown on the final plat. I do understand, though, the final plat is very busy, has, has a lot of lines, and you're kind of bound by the surveyor's requirements of what line types and, and other things that can be, be shown.
Does that address your question? Patrick, would it be helpful to put it up on the big screen?
Well, the, the only, I guess the curiosity was, for instance, the one that diagonally runs through Lot 2, is that easement remaining? Because it doesn't say anything about vacating.
Correct. I believe that, that will remain. I do not, you know, we don't have a utility plan with that, but the shape of that seems to indicate that, that some sort of a utility that appears like it would go to, well, in that location, I would, no, I'm not sure if that's a stormwater, but...
Looks like a sanitary line?
Could be.
For those double arrows.
Final plat.
Oh, sorry, that's preliminary.
Not the preliminary plat.
I'm up a little bit. And it should be the next one.
All, all I can say is that this, there was a survey team, two sheets down from that. There was a survey team, attorneys representing the, the individuals as well as the city that determined, yeah, that one, that we're...
He doesn't want to get on that one sheet.
They're preliminary copies, but that's the final plat.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
But it says preliminary, which is a little confusing.
I, yes.
So this, yep, this is the one.
Right there. And so there's...
Yeah, and then I was, yeah, and then that wide one that runs through north to south, right through the center of the block.
Yeah, and that, that one, north to south, makes more sense in that, that one, you know, is going to be along the new lot lines. The other ones you identified are going to be within the lots, but all we can say is that, you know, all, all parties who are going to sign on to this plat reviewed it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's a building on the, the big wide one that goes up. So there's a building right across it. So I'm assuming that one, they do, or if it exists, I don't know. Legally, they're dealing with it.
Correct, correct. And since it isn't a required subdivision, there isn't a utility plan that goes along with this.
Thanks, Eric. Anyone else? If not, do I have a motion to recommend that the planning commission recommends the city council approve the preliminary and final plats? Moved by Eric. Is there a second?
Second by Rick.
Second by Rick. Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Okay. Thank you. Then on to business action items and recommendations. First will be the sign ordinance update, and I believe that's Brandy again.
Yes, it is. Got another...
Mic on.
It is. I'll speak up, sorry. Another short presentation for you, and this one will be more of a discussion-based, so feel free to chime in with any questions at any time. So if you'll recall, this was, this sign ordinance update project was started about, well, it started with me in October, but I think you guys had had some discussions on it prior in the summer perhaps. And the overall purpose of updating the sign code is to make sure that it is, becomes in compliance with the 2015 Supreme Court decision, Reed versus Town of Gilbert. We also want to ensure consistency with the comprehensive plan and ultimately simplify it for clarity and administrative purposes. So in the packet is the beginning of a first draft of the ordinance, and the approach that we're taking is to sort of build it as we go. And the table of contents there represents the, the, the overall goal of what the entire sign code will include. So far, we have completed the purpose statement that was done before I started working with North St. Paul, and it was approved by this group at the last meeting in October. And the next four sections, applicability, definitions, exemptions to the ordinance, and prohibited signs, are what we have drafted so far. So as we move forward, we will continue to build on this draft document, and you will have the opportunity to refer back to those earlier sections, if necessary, and change them as we go along. So the first section is the applicability. This is actually a new section of the ordinance, and it basically is a simple statement that says, "Any new signs and the maintenance of any existing signs must conform to the sign ordinance." The one exception to this rule would be related to your Minnesota state statute, which allows political signs of any size and any number to remain for 46 days before an election until 10 days following an election. Any comments or questions about applicability? Okay. Definitions. You'll notice in the packet there was a few definitions, and those are related to the sections that were being drafted, the ones that seemed like they necessitated some defining as it was being drafted. So the first one is sign, which I'd like to open up the discussion about that. So the current definition is on the screen on the left, and then we provided two options, a one and two. Option one is in the white text, and this one we recommend for a couple of reasons. We like the, the option because it's, it's broad enough to capture a greater variety of sign types, but it discerns murals, art, and other communication devices that are intended to sell goods or services. And it's simple. It's also in conformance with the Reed, the Reed case. Any questions, comments, discussion?
One of the things that I know we had talked about was flags and banners, which I notice is, are not specifically mentioned in the option one definition, but it is in the current definition. Flag and the banner, and I, I guess I just wanted to bring that up, point it out, make sure that we're in agreement that, that that is the route we would go. I, I do, I agree with option one. I think it's, it's a better definition in general.
I, in response to that, I think that flags could be, if it's intended to sell and has that kind of product language on it, then it would be considered a sign. Otherwise, we would call it a flag, which would make it exempt from the ordinance. Flags are listed as item number 300D exemptions. Oh, yep, I'm sorry. So he's referring to, to flags being potentially a, a sign or not a sign, and that's true. I mean, they could be, but the, the definition, I believe, is trying to differentiate between those items, structures, whatever it might be, that's intended to sell something versus something that's not. So a flag could be either. It is listed, flags are listed as something that is exempt from the side ordinance. So if it's not included in option one as a sign, to me, that says if it's simply a flag, it's, it's not a sign. Does that logic follow?
Oh, we could define it as a flag.
Uh, to be determined.
And I think that's where it does get a little tricky to...
Well, I don't, I think that, I think the key is with the sign, with the option one definition, I think Brandy has it right, that it has to do with the message on the sign, the kind of message that it is, not the type of sign that it is. In other, in other words, if it's, if it's promoting a product or a business or something like that, if you have a sign that has your business name on it, or, I'm sorry, a flag that has your business name on it, it's now a sign. It's not a flag.
Correct.
Well, and if...
A flag, like, that, those flags are flags, because they're not promoting anything.
But again, the thing we don't get into is the message on a sign.
We don't regulate the message.
Correct. Well, and we don't distinguish by...
But, but the message on the sign makes it a sign, or not.
That would include a flag, if it's used to communicate something. It doesn't matter what it's communicating, whether it's that or some other message. So to me, the flag would fall under the definition of option one, because it's a means of communicating.
Kind of flag, any, any flag...
Well, we can get into that more later, but I don't, I don't think that the option one excludes a flag, is all I'm saying.
Right, that's correct. But, but it does have to do with the purpose of the flag.
Well...
Because it has to identify the building, the use of the business or the event, promote the sale of products. That's the definition of what a sign is. The...
But it's not limited to that, though.
How, how the sign is configured is not in that definition.
But this isn't just about business.
Right, that's true.
So we have to be careful about how the wording is to not make it appear that this is only applicable, you know, a sign only promotes a business.
No, that's not what it says.
And I just want to be sure that that's not how it would be read. I'm, I'm not saying it is, but...
But I'm, I'm trying to differentiate because you start looking at, well, a great example, Camping World's the best example that I know of, because they've gotten into lawsuits about American flags and their properties, because they like big flags. They like big American flags. You can tell it's Camping World when you're approaching it because of the big American flag. I mean, Perkins is the same way.
Mm-hmm.
Big American flags. Slumberland has big American flags in some cases.
But I'm saying, you can also communicate a message, a non-commercial message, is what, is all I'm saying.
See, that, in my mind, is a non-commercial message.
Pardon me?
That's a non-commercial message.
Yeah.
Right?
Well...
Because it's an American flag. You can put American flags in...
Would be to me, but again, to me, it doesn't matter. It's communicating something, and that's what a sign is. A sign is a means of communication. That's the purpose.
But an American flag is not a sign. I use that as an example because it's a really obvious example. It's a really extreme, it's, it's, represents our country, so, so an American flag is not a sign.
No country flag would be a sign.
Correct. The state flag would not be a sign.
I, I guess I'm not even sure what...
And...
The only point I was going to make is I don't think we have to separately include the word "flag" in the definition of sign for it to be covered by the definition.
I think that's, I think that's true.
So, I mean, I'm okay with option one because it's really quite expansive when it says "any communication device."
Well, I would suggest that we put a peg in this one, and as this ordinance develops, this is a definition that we can continue to come back to and see if it works within the confines of the, the court case and also with the ordinance as it, as it unfolds.
Once we get into more of the details of the regulations and...
Sure.
Whatever limits we end up with.
So I can put in the next version that comes before you, the current and the proposed, and then we'll just go from there, so we can have both to look at.
Now, and, and one of the challenges there is then, are those flags also limited in terms of the number of square feet that they can be, you know? So is this, I think, a four-by-six somewhere in here, we're talking about maximum of four-by-six-feet sign. Does that mean that people can't have, have flags that are larger than that? I think you were kind of getting at that earlier.
No, because...
That'll come into the regulation piece of it, when you get down to the nitty-gritty.
That'll get into the regulation.
Yeah. And then we're still back to the same issue of, well, what constitutes a flag, you know, because somebody could do, you know, some of the, you know, the blue and black flags or...
The point is, a, a flag can be a sign or not a sign. The point is a flag can be a sign or not a sign.
Yeah.
If you define a flag by, you know, the shape and the fabric and stuff. It can be a sign or it cannot be a sign depending on what's on it.
Let's hold off on that until we get further into, when we get into the act.
Certainly an issue.
I understand.
Flags can have both purposes.
I understand what you're saying.
So I think that's why I think the option one definition is good because it, it isn't specific to that, to the, to the shape or the, what the device is. It just talks about a device.
I think we actually probably have a definition now for flag. That, we haven't gone through all the definitions, so that'll come as we go along.
Correct.
But I did notice up on your, I mean, does anybody have any, any other concern with option one? Not should we talk about the ones you've, I don't know if you highlighted them or not, but I had a question on flashing sign.
Sure.
I guess my question really gets into, is that really a sign type? Is that really a type of sign, or is that just a matter of type of illumination?
I would say it's a type of illumination, and the definitions within this ordinance will not be limited to sign types.
Okay.
Anything that needs to have clarification will be included in the definitions list.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's where we had so many types of signs, and there really aren't that many different types of signs. There are different regulations.
Yes.
And the other one is yard sign. So are we saying that all yard signs are temporary signs?
As it's written now, yes.
This is what we have now. Is this correct?
I'd have to look at the ordinance. See what we have now. Shoot, how do I get this thing out of the way?
Yard sign is defined as temporary now. I mean, that's, the ordinance that's in here is what we have now, is that?
That was my question. I don't know if that's how we define it or not right now.
Yard signs are temporary.
I agree.
Oh, this is the working draft? Okay.
They have a business down there. It's out there all the time.
That's kind of what I'm saying. This would seem to indicate we have a specific kind of temporary sign called a yard sign.
Oh, you're, no, that's me, that's me. I think so, I'm just sharing the wrong thing now. So I'm trying to catch up here. Okay, what was the definition you were looking for?
Yard sign. Do we, I don't, do we define yard sign now?
Let's find out. Oh, I didn't see it. So, no, I don't see a yard sign.
Right, but we do define freestanding sign, correct? Because this seems to be a, getting at the same thing that freestanding gets at, which is it's not, you know, it's, it's not like a monument sign that's anchored in some way. It's easily movable?
Yes, so let's see, a yard sign. I mean, I think typically these are intended to be your garage sale type signs, but it's not so limited in the definition that it could include other signs that are of a temporary nature that can be moved to and from and are not intended to be permanent. So freestanding, under your current definition, would also probably
Yeah, I think it's just, again, one of those things to keep in mind as we go further and we start
Sure.
looking at things. Because you can't, I mean, yard sign, to me, it's like that would be a sign in your yard.
Yes.
Wouldn't necessarily have to be temporary. Because a monument sign potentially is a freestanding sign in a yard.
Yeah, I think I was, as I was drafting this, was under the direction, the thought direction, that freestanding would be something that we would eliminate because it is too, it's a, it's a term that could apply to many different types of signs. So I think overall, if we can get as specific as possible into the definitions where it is important to do so and pull back where it's, you know, better to be a little bit more vague.
Well, I think, I'm not certain that, you can have temporary signs. I'm not certain they need to be called a yard sign. That's all I'm getting at.
The intent for the yard sign definition at this point in time was to clarify that yard signs would be exempt from the ordinance. So the garage sale type of sign would not be required to come in, you would not need to come in for a permit if you wanted a garage sale sign or something of that nature. And if that is the intent of this group, then that is the direction that we'll take. But if we need to be a little bit more flexible with freestanding signs in general, we'll take that direction, too.
And I know what, I know what you're getting at. And maybe there's another word other than yard sign that would work.
Yeah, this is work and draft.
Yeah, exactly.
So it may take several iterations before we get to all the definitions.
And we haven't gotten to the whole point of this or not, but this also, when you use the word temporary, that would indicate that you can't have a permanent, you can't put out a yard, a yard sign that you intend to keep there for
Years.
a non-temporary amount of time, but we don't, we'd have to define what temporary means would be the issue. So it's, again, just something to keep in mind as we, really more as we get into the further discussion about how many signs where and how big.
Yeah.
So I just raised it because of that.
So did we completely mess up your presentation, Brandy?
No. This is, I am prepared for that.
It's just guidance. We're just helping.
Yeah, I mean, really, the point of the discussion is to have, the presentation is to facilitate the discussion. So if we're ready to move beyond definition.
I've thought about quite a bit since we've started looking at the sign ordinance in some detail. I'd really like to see that some of the definitions more, I'm careful about how I say this. There, there is within the, like, the signage manufacturing industry, there are types of signs
Okay.
that freestanding would not be a normal definition.
Okay.
If you were going to produce a sign, design and produce one. A pylon sign, a monument sign, a ground sign, sometimes a monument sign is referred to as a ground sign.
Okay, so seek industry standard.
But look for industry standard definitions, then, if you will, bring them to the table. We may not want to use those. We might want to make it more generic than those definitions. But I think freestanding was one that always kind of bothered me because it can mean 100 different things, and it has nothing to do with what the industry, industry manufactures.
Freestanding was more a category because it would include things like.
If it includes a pylon, if it includes a monument sign, it, it can include a lot of different things. And if we want it to be that generic.
It's one that's not attached to some other structure.
Then that, that might be what we want to actually do. But I think maybe tying it to, to industry standard is a good thing to do, too, because then when you have somebody coming to do a development in your, in your city, and they want to put a sign up, they can connect the dots with their signage guy. If that makes sense.
Yes.
I think that's something that I think we need to look at a little bit more carefully.
You know, there are some definitions I think we could absolutely get rid of.
So would it be helpful to have in the next draft your current definitions and start to redline those?
It would for me because we've got so many of them. And like I say, and some of them, they really aren't a sign type. And that, I, to me, that makes it confusing. It makes it more confusing than it needs to be when you're including the regulatory, you know, adjective as a type of sign, when it's not really. It's a regulation for any sign that might have that particular feature.
Sure.
So I think it would be helpful, especially when we start getting into the actual discussion of what signs do we allow where. Makes it easier to have that discussion, I think.
Another, another item that I thought needs attention is the lit signs, internally or externally lit.
Oh, that, that's the second to last slide in the presentation. Should we keep moving forward?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next, the next section is the exemptions. So we, we used your existing exemptions as a starting point. In general, we just simplified the language to improve clarity. And then if we needed to create a definition, we did so. And then we also removed any regulatory text that was included within this section. So we, where there's regulations, we might pull those in later as we're drafting the ordinance as appropriate. So do you have any comments or questions about the exemptions, item D?
I just have one comment before any questions come up. This is not exemptions to the sign ordinance, this is exemption to the permit requirements.
Correct.
Or to the permit, to permitting. In other words, you don't need a permit to do this.
That is a good clarification, thank you. Any other questions or comments on exemptions?
I have a quick question. What does number six mean?
Oh, we had a conversation with Elaine about that one earlier. That also is some, I think we were trying to put everything, including the kitchen sink, into the list that wouldn't need to get a permit. We wouldn't require you to make, to get a permit if you wanted to maintain your sign. But it's not exactly a sign type, so this might not be the most appropriate location for that. So as we get into the ordinance drafting, we can put, create a maintenance section and an abandoned sign section that would address that you don't need to get permits to, to maintain your signs.
And yard signs, depending on what we do with that whole category, may or may not be in here.
Oh, you're thinking that perhaps yard signs might.
Well, depending on what, how we end up with that definition issue.
Kind of along the same lines of thinking as the maintenance. Also included in this list is statues and decorations.
Right.
And I kept going back and forth on whether or not it was appropriate to have those in here. And I ultimately just decided this, it's better to be more inclusive than not to, to signal you, you don't have to have a sign permit to get a, to put a statue in, in your yard. But that's something that could be pulled out if.
Well, that kind of goes with number four, which is graphic, you know, artistic things. Statues is kind of the same category, works of art. Which, again, can be messages.
So, yeah, I mean, this kind of gets back to the flag discussion, too. If it's not a sign, if it's a flag that's not a sign, then you don't need a permit for it. So maybe, maybe the simple solution is instead of saying the following signs, the following devices, signs, whatever the word is, can be permitted.
Well, I don't have a problem with the, you know, exemptions being that, you know, the following shall be allowed without a sign permit, that first sentence. I mean, that's, because then all you're, you're not saying it, it isn't subject potentially to regulations.
Sure.
But you're saying it just doesn't need to apply for a permit, to go through the permit process to do this or to erect, you know, one of these. Again, I think until we get further into it, we probably can't say yes or no, absolutely, this is the list, is my thinking. I don't, you were going to say something earlier, though, Rick.
Yeah, I think it'll come up a little bit further down the road, you know, on illuminations and stuff.
Okay. But do you see what I'm?
I do, yep.
So I think for, you know, for starters, I wouldn't say yea or nay yet until we get into the, actually doing the regulatory portion of it and deciding what types of signs go in what districts, if that makes sense.
It does. Any other comments on exemptions?
Oh, but on 13, the note I made to myself was, when I said yard signs, that was getting into the fact if that's, if they're only temporary. You know, what we're really talking about is temporary when we're talking yard sign, based on the definition that's in the packet right now. So that's why that struck me. It wouldn't, you know, you're saying, yeah, you don't need a permit for a temporary sign, is essentially what was being said.
Yeah, I follow what you're saying now.
But I think there might be temporary signs you want to have permits.
I'm not going to disagree with you. I'm just saying that's why I noticed yard sign in its definition.
I think the yard sign and the temporary are two, two different things that are definitely a part of the discussion.
Well, right now, they're tied.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, because.
At least here.
Yeah, and you, you raised the point, so that's why I included a definition for yard sign.
Yeah.
Because you wouldn't want a political sign or something similar all year round.
Well, and any kind of sign, you know, we have lots of yard signs out and about in the city.
Sure.
And, you know, they're probably been up for years, but. Okay, on to prohibited.
Prohibited, okay. So again, this section was primarily derived from your existing code. And we had two policy questions for you. And the first was, how should we address signs that aren't mentioned in the ordinance at all? And that could be handled in basically one of two ways. Excuse me. A simple statement that any sign not identified would be either permitted or not permitted per the code. Or if there's a question, it could be brought forward to the plan commission for determination. So a simple statement that if it's not included in this ordinance, it's not spelled out for us, then we'll need to get a clarification. So I think that would be the approach I would suggest unless you would like to outright prohibit anything that's not listed. And then item two was the internally lit signs. So on the screen, there are some examples of what is currently not allowed and what is allowed. And it's kind of hard to see the difference, but the bottom, the bottom two is a marquee sign and a neon sign. And then the, the ones on top, you would call those, basically, the taco cantu, I would call that a cabinet sign that's lit inside. And then you've got the track letters on the yolandas. And then the friendship, I'm not sure what you would call that type. But all three of those are fairly standard. They exist in your community already, not those exact ones, but that's internally lit signs do. So the question is, do we want to continue to prohibit those?
If they exist in our community, how, how do they exist in our community if they were prohibited? Come on, Brandy, you should know such things. I was curious about that because I, I thought, yeah, those are, those are.
Pretty common.
Got those.
The only thing I could think of is that the, I'm not sure when this ordinance was created to begin with. These signs could predate the ordinance one. Or this prohibition is buried in a place that's not at all near the regulations for signage, so it's probably just missed an administration of it over the years. I believe it was in. I believe it was in, well, it would have been in the prohibited sign section. If you're not familiar with the ordinance and you're putting together, you know, reviewing it for a permit quickly, and your job isn't normally to review sign permits, you just would jump to the section, what sign is allowed and what district, and you go to that table. This prohibition's not listed in that table.
I didn't really expect you to have an answer to that.
Oh. You asked.
But a good try, anyway. Good logical, logical approach. I did, I did have, and maybe it's just for future discussion, but under your item one, signs not identified in the code, the creating a process for planning commission to review and determine on a case-by-case basis, does that get too complicated? I thought Elaine would shake her head, yes.
Well, that gets potentially arbitrary.
You're in a position then of setting precedent, whatever you make a decision on those.
And you don't know who was told no and didn't pursue it for maybe asking exactly the same thing.
Yeah.
And that's the danger.
Very difficult to do.
Yeah.
But does anybody, let's go back to internally illuminated. Does anybody think we should keep the prohibition?
I, you know, I'm fine with having internally illuminated signs. I think, though, we ought to be, you know, I mean, as we are planning on doing is regulating the size of signs and especially with the illuminated ones, how bright they are. You know, the issues of flashing lights, the hours that they're, you know, that they are functioning at. And maybe even the location.
Well, and that gets into the whole motion type thing, the flashing, the motion, that kind of thing. That's where, that, to me, is in your regulatory standards, and that's where that gets addressed. And.
Well, let's see. Flashing was listed as prohibited, and it was included in the definition.
Flashing was listed as permitted or prohibited?
Prohibited. And then the definition of flashing, any illuminated sign which emits an intermittent or flashing light or creates the illusion of intermittent or flashing light by means of animation, which is not a changeable copy sign.
Right.
Yeah, but I think we've got to deal with some of the issues of, well, what constitutes flashing, you know? If it flashes once a second, is that, you know?
Take a look at our Casey Lake sign.
Casey Lakes?
Casey Lake Park sign.
That has.
Yeah, that does flash.
That can definitely be a flashing sign.
It has been. It's been a rotating, spinning sign.
Yeah. Because, because those changeable, the changeable message electronic signs, whatever you want to call those, they can, they can do anything you want them to do, depending on how sophisticated they are.
And that's when we get into the regulation piece of it, because they shouldn't be doing whatever they want to do, so to speak.
We'll have to address what we care about.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the intensity of the light.
Piece, because it's a distraction. It's the only reason, really. But, I mean, I don't see any reason to not, to prohibit internally illuminated signs when they are common, we have them, we know that. And then exclude only one type, neon, which.
Neon is allowed presently.
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's allowed. So there's always going to be new types of signs and illumination coming, so I think just, let's get rid of that. Just regulate the light portion of it under the regulations, like Rick was talking about. That's where that belongs.
So you're allowing illuminated signs, and then we're, we're going to regulate how much or what kind of illumination from a sample.
If a sign is illuminated, here's, yeah.
Like it's not shining into your neighbor's bedroom, kind of.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I think in the downtown, that's a whole, you know, in the heart of downtown, that's a whole nother thing, because we have separate, you know, a little separate section.
That should be in the downtown.
Right, but that's only the downtown piece. We've spread it well beyond downtown, and there was no need to do that, I don't think.
The other thing about sign, lit signage, is lighting sources have changed so dramatically.
Yeah.
To talk about a neon sign is, there are a lot of signs that look like neon that aren't neon now, so we want to make sure that we're generic enough, that we're addressing all the different LED variations and things.
So maybe that would be a tube sign as opposed to neon.
Right.
And along that line, I know it comes up every now and then that we, you know, we're addressing something and it talks about wattage, you know, rather than talking about brightness. And, you know, with LED lights, it gets pretty crazy.
It needs.
You know, 60 watts of LED light is a heck of a lot of light.
Hell.
Now that we've got all these apartments downtown, we have to start rethinking downtown, too. What constitutes downtown versus not downtown?
Yeah. We're going to have, because that's in the downtown design manual as well, which is another thing that is awaiting update. Yeah, I think we're in agreement that we don't have to prohibit illuminated, internally illuminated signs.
Yeah.
I think the flashing is the thing that we'll have to address.
I think there's flashing, animation, the whole motion piece, but motion is typically with the.
The electronic.
The electronic ones.
Yeah, I think that'll be in a discussion in and of itself.
Well, I think there's some regulations that limit how frequently a sign can refresh to another image or something. And, you know, and I think that can be really useful in terms of safety.
Agreed.
I did have a question on item, well, just under item E, the second item is advertising or business signs on or attached to mobile equipment. Why, why don't we just say signs on or attached to mobile equipment, but not portable sign where the signing is a principal use? Why do we say advertising or business? And that's probably what we say now.
I believe so.
Yeah, so I would just say signs on or attached to mobile equipment, potentially.
This one, I think it'd weigh in. Particularly commercial vehicles, the regulations require a certain amount of signage. You need to, you need to have your gross weight, et cetera. So I think that language is meant to be your advertising, that it's a plumbing company, not that your truck has this license.
No, I agree. I agree.
But, so I don't want to make it so open that now putting your license number or your gross weight becomes a sign, because it is conveying a message.
No, because it goes on to say where signing is a principal use of the equipment. So in other words, it's some kind of mobile piece of equipment that is used just to be a sign.
Okay.
And that's what this is getting at. I thought, I don't think it really matters if it's advertising or business. It's, we don't want that.
I take your point that there's another way to regulate it, but the idea of that is particularly commercial vehicles.
Oh, absolutely.
Fire messages, and we wanted to make sure we wouldn't prevent those.
Yeah. Well, and I think we even, do we mention anywhere in here that, you know, that we're not, you know, going to be doing anything that's contrary to regulation, other regulations, you know, statutory requirements for signing?
Yeah.
Because that is.
There's a couple, there's a couple of general places of, that those can be addressed. But that's, that's a good point, but there are ways to add a kind of overriding statement like that and not have to do it in each individual section.
Oh, yeah, that's what I meant, kind of just to.
We will address it.
Okay. So like I say, even if it, even if it were somebody who rented their, you know, birthday truck out or something, we wouldn't necessarily, I mean, it might be advertising or whatever, but you don't want a vehicle being used solely as a sign, is really what this is saying, if I understand it right.
Yeah, this, to me, this is Abe's taxidermy sign that's on a tractor trailer off of Highway 35 where I live. It's trying to prevent vehicles from becoming signs and just being parked there permanently.
Yeah, and if I just parked something in my driveway that said Elaine's house, probably wouldn't want that.
Well, even the moving billboards, you know, that's kind of the ultimate.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I thought it was referring to, was the, you know, they have them in Vegas.
Those tiny little things?
You know, I mean, they're lit and everything, and it's, it's a truck that's a sign.
Sure.
We certainly want to regulate something like that.
Yeah.
But those are usually moving, and they're on public streets, and I don't know that we can regulate through zoning ordinance.
They got to park sometime.
Yeah, that's true. Anyway, that's just one that occurred to me. The other, the other ones were more about, oh, signs pasted or attached to utility post trees, fences. Again, that's not, we're not prohibiting the sign. That's saying where you cannot put a sign. Can't put it on, right? It's more of a.
Keep your stuff of any kind off of our utility poles. Okay. Yep.
And then the number six was signs on or over public right-of-way unless the city grants permission or is otherwise specified in this section. And I guess I would question, what would the criteria for the city granting permission be?
Well, this, I believe, is probably related to banners that would extend across the street for like a festival. What do you think, Eric? In which case, then you would need special permitting to.
Well, they're prohibited.
With prohibited?
Permit, something that's prohibited.
I agree, that's the intent. You know, the language like that, typically, then the city council would develop a policy, that the policy provides the guidance on, on when you could grant that. You know, it's, it's essentially a right-of-way encroachment permit, and you can approve them, you could deny them, you could develop a policy to say when you would approve or deny them.
But this is.
It's different than an ordinance.
Public right-of-way.
What's that?
This is county or state public right-of-way. We, we don't have any control over the state or county right-of-way. It's municipal.
I apologize, then. I misunderstood the question.
No, it's municipal, county or state public right-of-way unless the city grants permission.
So, I'm sorry, just to clarify, is your issue the county or state right-of-way, or is your issue the permission?
You know, it would be, it's more gets to the criteria, you know.
That would be the permission side? Yeah. I mean, there's the ability to get right-of-way encroachment permits now. The council determines what the criteria are for those. It's just a different way of, of setting up the criteria outside of having it codified in the ordinance.
It would seem to me something that would have to be done, though.
Agreed.
Because otherwise, how do you treat people the same? Okay.
Can, can we talk about signs on right-of-ways in a general way? You know, not just banners, but also yard signs, however that gets defined. And, you know, we've talked about it in terms of, you know, no posting on telephone poles and in trees and things like that. That may address a lot of those types of issues.
Well, I thought we just didn't allow them, I thought they had to be set back.
That I don't have off the top of my head.
I thought somewhere in our standards, there was a setback. There usually is.
Which would put it out of the right-of-way, is what you're saying.
There is a 10-foot setback from a property line.
Okay.
But would that be for the yard signs or right-of-way signs?
Currently, I believe it is.
For everything? Okay.
But that's something, you know, you're good for bringing it up, that's something we should figure out if we want to continue. But currently, there's a 10-foot.
Okay, okay, thanks.
And an exception would be political signs during the political season.
I think we can still regulate location.
Okay, but if I think of where political signs end up, a lot of them really do end up in the right-of-way.
Yeah, they do sometimes, but I think you can still.
And being realistic, I don't know that we're going to really be able to regulate something like that. And to some degree, you know, signs indicating a yard sale down the street type of thing. I mean, that gets to be a lot, but I, we think, we need, I don't know what the answer is, but we need to think about it and figure out.
Well, and I think maybe 10 feet is.
A way to address it what we want.
A lot. That's a pretty far setback, but again, we haven't gotten that far yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially for, like you say, a little, you know, what, two-by-four sign on, you know, that you slam into the ground, that's.
Sure.
Put it too far back, you can't read it. Nobody's going to see it, so.
And people that are putting those signs in realtors or garage sales or what have you, they don't read the sign code, and they don't know that there's a 10-foot requirement.
Right, right.
Well, they don't have to.
And, yeah, that would just be onerous.
Any other thoughts on the prohibitions?
Yes. I certainly appreciate that we prohibit billboards, but do we have a definition of what billboards are? And I, it just seems like it'd be worthwhile to have a general discussion of, of billboards as signs. You know, I, like I say, I certainly appreciate that we don't have billboards in the city. I think they tend to clutter things up, and, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't think they add value to the, to the city. I'm interested in other people's thoughts on that.
I have a thought.
Yeah.
We probably need to define a billboard if we're going to not allow it.
We've got the definition on the, on this, the current definition there, which we can start with. Can everybody see that?
I guess I would agree that, with Rick, that it just doesn't seem like we have room for a traditional billboard, you know, the big ones on the highway. I just don't know that it would make sense of where we would allow such a sign, but just my two cents, anyway.
It's essentially, essentially, it's an off-premise sign. Yeah, of any size.
It would be feasible to put one along Highway 36.
Would be feasible to put one along McKnight.
Yeah, yeah.
17th, 11th.
And tree.
I think it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good definition, the way it is. I mean, maybe, maybe it gets some adjustment, but.
Because it doesn't have to be, you know, a big, huge, monstrous thing. It's any off-premise sign.
So a billboard could be two foot by four foot?
If it's advertised, if it's located and advertising something that's located elsewhere, that's the key piece.
Maybe you're right, maybe we can. I was thinking of the big ones, you know, the big illuminated ones, but.
Yeah, I know. I know. I was, too, when I, but I did look up the definition and thought, oh, wow, that's very expansive, as far, as far as what we consider a billboard. Something to think about. And there's a reason, I mean, because really, if you have it off your own location, then, you know, it's on somebody else's property advertising for something over here, whatever that might be. So you don't want necessarily a proliferation of people selling space in their yard.
So I, let me just make sure I'm understanding everybody. You're all in favor, generally, of prohibiting any off-premises sign? of prohibiting any off-premises sign? Okay. I think it would be good to clarify what a billboard is, too.
I think I would say that, yes, generally, but this kind of then goes back to when we were talking about what do we do with signs that are prohibited. And I just wanted to weigh in and say that I... Personally, I feel like that the option two of that question is something we should think about, where, you know, the planning commission could make a determination, because there could be a lot of issues like this where a business would say, and they could have a good case, hey, you know, because of the location of my business, I need a sign at the end of the street directing people where to go for parking or something like that. So I'm not, you know, I think, like, you know, we said, it's probably something we still need to talk about, but I think there could be... I would hope maybe there could be a way that we could review things that are as written prohibited, but could make sense, and I understand that begins to set precedent, and I know that's something we don't want to do very often, but maybe there's a, you know, some way we could figure out to make that work. Because I think we have to leave a little bit of room to allow things that maybe, you know, don't fit specifically into the code.
So perhaps a special exception process for the things that are prohibited expressly, and also a process by which, if it's not addressed at all, then we come for clarification.
So what if there was... What if there was a property along Highway 36? I'm just trying to think of some random example. Property along Highway 36, and the Castro really wanted to get some visibility, and they want a sign out there that points them into North St. Paul.
If you do it for brothers.
You know, that would be prohibited by the current prohibition of billboards.
If you do it for one, you have to do it for everybody, though.
Yes, exactly. You do. So it's just... It is... It's, uh... The dangerous precedent-setting scenario, although in some cases, I mean, I would agree with you, there are circumstances where it might make really good sense and be very tasteful, and then you've got a precedent. Now, the next guy who comes along that's not as tasteful, and you don't want to do it, too bad for you, you set the precedent.
I would just like to add, I think that was exactly what the Reed case was. It was granting favor.
Yep.
I don't think that's possible. One way that you could address what you're talking about is what we talked about originally, which is, we don't care about the content at all. And you get a certain number of signs, you get a certain size of signs, you get the signs of location. We don't care what it says. And if Bob's Barbecue wanted to go to somebody else's property and say, the code allows one more sign, I would like that sign, and I'd like to save my business. If you went that direction of just signs, size, location, number, you could do that. But I would caution highly on that. And then, as I heard it explained, what we're proposing about what to do with the planning commission is when it's not mentioned in the code. So the intention of that wasn't to take something that is mentioned, like what is prohibited, and allow the planning commission to interpret. It's when it's not addressed, you come to the planning commission. So that was... That's the two differences there.
Yeah, and that makes sense. I agree with that, yeah. And I think...
Some of... Go ahead and finish. I'm sorry. Some of the issue with billboard signs is also that they're rental property in essence, and maybe prohibiting that might be another part of how we regulate it.
I don't know about that. What do you think, Eric? Prohibiting rental?
If I could, I just think I know there is additional information. Billboards, kind of in more traditional scheme. Actually, there's a... I don't know if it's rules or laws, but there's a National Highway Beautification Act. That is what addresses billboards and why communities can choose to ban them. I think let's come back after we review those rules, and maybe that will help us with some guidance.
It has to be, like, for us, it would have to be some distance from Highway 36, so it, you know, wasn't all that visible and that kind of stuff. So typically, billboards are those big highway signs. It's just the way we've defined it. It's any off-premise sign anywhere.
If you do your regulations based on size and location, if your sign is limited to 60 square feet, you're never going to have the traditional billboard, you see? Because those aren't 60 square feet.
Right.
So there may be other ways, but I just wanted to point out that there is specific state or, sorry, federal rules on billboard that if we could... We'll bring more information about what we can and can't do under those regulations.
Okay.
Okay.
Excuse me. Okay, I will...
The other piece that I'll just mention is, underprohibited again, is number nine, signs which swing or otherwise noticeably move from wind pressure. That's a lot of signs. Again, if you're talking about they're prohibited, well, that's banners, potentially. That's flags that do serve as some kind of sign. They move with wind pressure. So again, I think that gets into more a regulatory thing, where we don't want signs that are spinning around constantly or something like that. But maybe there's a better way to address... That's a motion issue.
Sure, that makes sense.
And it's not something that you would prohibit as a sign, so to speak, because that would prohibit, like I say, flags or banners of any kind.
When we start getting into that stuff, you probably need to look at the incredible inflatable flailing arm tube man.
Yeah, yeah. That's definitely one. But so is... There was one that... There were some up on Polar Plaza there for a while that were those, I don't even know what the kind of sign, what they're called, but they were like a flag-type thing, but they'd sit at an angle. It had like a sail thing, and it was just... It was fluttering so much, I couldn't even read what it said. And I thought, well, there's a sign that we don't allow right now, and for good reason. You couldn't read it.
Well, and some of those of that kind of size are more to get your attention-
Yeah.
And may not even have a message on them-
Yeah.
Other than it's bright and it's moving.
Yeah. And again, to me, that just gets back into the whole motion thing, which is, from the safety standpoint, is a distraction. I mean, it's there to catch your eye.
Okay, good points. We need to look at inflatable man and feather signs.
I think gorillas.
We'll consider that for the next meeting.
Gorillas are acceptable.
Any others on the prohibition? If not, we'll move to sign permits.
You know, something to think about... Oh, sorry. It would be, because we have the whole sign permit section, would be to put the exemption to the permit requirement under there as a first piece. You know, the following are exempt from...
That's a good...
Instead of having this separate list of...
That would clarify things. I think that's a good...
It might just make it easier to do that piece.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense to me.
Good start, though. It just kind of points out that there's a lot to think about when you're dealing with these.
Okay, so permitting. This is our final section. We didn't really alter this substantially. It's been reorganized for clarity and ease of use. The most substantive change was removing the section that requires an applicant to enter into an agreement with the city that authorizes the city to remove and dispose of signs that are not maintained or have valid permits. Sections on maintenance and abandoned signs will be drafted that address these situations that will not require a need for an agreement with a permit holder. So that's how we're proposing to handle it. Another new addition to the section is suspension and revocation, which allows staff the ability to revoke a permit if it was issued in error or if it goes against another ordinance in the city. This addition provides staff the ability to retroactively revoke or temporarily suspend a permit if it is issued in error or if information provided for construction does not match that was... Which was submitted.
So if staff made a mistake, then this, we'd be allowed to revoke the permit?
That's the way that we've drafted it, or plan to draft it, yeah.
Okay.
Unless you tell us otherwise.
No, it just kind of surprised me.
So item under sign permits, H2D, D is in dog, gives you plenty of opportunity to set precedent, because there may be conditions. Maybe subject to conditions gives us a lot of opportunity to establish something unique for a particular situation.
Well, and I guess that gets into the process. Who would establish those conditions? Staff?
Well, I don't... You're bringing up some good discussion. Yeah, I don't know.
You don't need to answer now, but it's certainly food for thought.
Yeah, because I don't think that you want your staff coming up with conditions on their own, so...
They recommend conditions. That would be appropriate.
Do you recommend guidelines?
I think if there's a question regarding whether or not a permit is allowed, or they're requesting a special exception, then it would need to go through a separate process, in which case this D would be eliminated from two.
Well, I mean, I guess the way it's worded, I'm wondering if D means that... Well, I don't know. It's hard to know. I have to think about what we currently allow, but it certainly couldn't be something where there'd be a variance of some kind involved.
Well, but if it's...
But maybe the mixture of signage, instead of having this one sign, lets you have two smaller ones or something. But again, it gets into a gray area that's quite large.
It puts too much authority in the hands of staff that staff doesn't really want or should have.
Well, it's really not clear enough.
Yeah, so we'll take a look at this and try to figure out what the intent is and figure out an alternate direction.
I think it's also key that it references adjoining property, because you're not just talking about a property owner and their signs. You're talking about it's a collection of adjacent properties as well. So it's a pretty big equation that we're talking about there. It's a very large opening to set precedent, for someone to set precedent. And I would think if we're going to have something like that, that there may be conditions applied. That's not a staff decision. That's a commission decision.
Or the conditions, you know, the circumstances would be part of the ordinance.
Right.
The potential conditions. I mean, there have to be some kind of standards for that.
Well, your standards that staff is going to adhere by should be within the condition or within the ordinance itself. So if anything is going above and beyond that, then it would need to come to you for...
And I think you're right. Maybe that paragraph just goes away.
Sure.
It's just very unclear.
Yeah, we'll take a look. Any other comments on permitting? If not, that is the end of the presentation for sign ordinance.
So the next... The last page there has the next items, I guess, measurement standards, construction and maintenance, temporary signs, non-conforming, and administration. Is that what's left? Plus the updating of all the various definitions and so forth?
Yes. So I think this... F and G are also not complete yet.
Right.
So the... Yeah, what you're looking at, this is the ordinance, and then there's a good deal of it that's not done yet. So the next sections that we're going to be looking at for the next meeting, I believe, are the next three.
Well...
General regulations. Sorry, was that not your question?
No, general regulations, district regulations, and measurement standards, potentially?
Yep.
Okay. I mean, I would like the general and district to come before some of the others, although the construction, I think that gets at some of the things that are going to... That also touch on the regulations, so...
I see construction and maintenance being one of the simpler sections to tackle, as well as administration and enforcement. The districts are going to be the bulk of the discussion, and we may need to break that out into residential versus non-residential districts.
Well, then you were going to take a look at the definitions, too, and maybe start saying, eh, maybe...
Yep. Well, so I'll bring in all of the definitions and differentiate the new versus the old somehow, and then we'll keep adding to this ordinance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any last-minute thoughts that you want to share as she goes back to her dungeon?
I have a question.
Work on this.
Elaine, I have a question.
Pardon me?
I have a question.
Yes.
Once we complete this ordinance, are we going to compare it to, like, Oakdale's and Maplewood's, and see if there's any major hangups?
We could certainly compare it as we go through the process. Is... Are those two ordinances ones that have some appeal? They do? They've been updated recently?
No.
No.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
That's part of the problem, is there are a lot of ordinances out there that haven't been updated and need to be. So that's what makes it kind of tricky.
We could certainly take a look at those, too, if...
But I think what we do want to do at that point, we had talked about potentially, once we get it in pretty good shape as far as being shareable, maybe take it to the business association or something like that and get input, because a lot of times, the businesses are the ones that are really, you know, interested, and it's really important for them.
Yeah, they'll be the...
The residential stuff is actually, you know, the easier portion.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
Not notes.
Thanks. Oh, now let me find my agenda.
Good job, Brandy.
All righty, then we're down to, oh, the Seventh Avenue Improvements. Is that you again? Oh, is he online?
It's me.
Ah, there.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Well, I am your friendly neighborhood city engineer. I apologize I couldn't be there in person. I was a little under the weather today, so I decided to be on the safe side and do this from home. So this next item before you here tonight is basically a check-in by staff as staff is working on the design documents for the 2022 Seventh Avenue improvements, which basically contemplate portions of Seventh Avenue in between First Street and slightly east of Helen Street to match up with what was completed in 2020 and 2021 with the Sentinel Building, and then also in 2020 and 2021, just to the west, basically installing things that are... The implementation or the realization of the downtown revitalization plan, which was... I don't have that in front of me. I believe it was adopted by council in 2017 and was basically kind of a template for corridor , streetscape improvements on Seventh Avenue downtown. And as... And as a guideline, that really is what has been followed again for the 2020 projects on either side of this next project, which will be constructed next year. And if you look at your packet, there are two figures here that really, the, the highlight here for the commission and also the city council are different parking configurations. So the first one, which shows 60-degree diagonal parking east of Helen, and that is in conformance with a pre-existing condition in terms of on-street parking configuration. But then also of note is the transitionary block west of Helen as you move towards First Street. And that is not diagonal parking, that is parallel parking. And again, that's the existing condition right now. There were, and that is also how the revitalization, Seventh Avenue corridor plan shows in between Helen and First Street. There were some discussions earlier in 2021, potentially, I think, around the end of 2020 revolving around the need for additional parking in the downtown area. And not just on-street, you know, public parking, but looking at improvements to the city-owned surface parking lots in the area as well too. And so the idea of changing that parallel parking configuration between First and Helen to a diagonal configuration was brought up. It was thought about, we actually went so far as to get a variance from MinDOT to allow for, if we did use state aid funds, gas tax funds for reconstruction or street improvements on Seventh Avenue. With the current condition or the current configuration, actually, it's, it's substandard to state aid rules for diagonal parking. So we did look at kind of the lower traffic volumes that we have out there and some other factors and did seek a variance and was granted that variance. So if, if we wanted to move forward in that fashion, we could. It would wind up looking like the second figure in your packet, which is, it's a slightly different 45-degree diagonal parking than the 60-degree parking. Now, this is very schematic, it hasn't been, it doesn't show driveway entrances and that sort of thing, so this, the, the second figure is not necessarily intended to be the exact configuration. But as you can see from that, the two different figures, there is, with diagonal parking, you can generally have a greater number of stalls. However, one thing of note is that just by the, the character of the blocks between Helen and Margaret and Margaret and Charles, there are much fewer driveways or driveway accesses, driveway curb cuts. And when you have diagonal parking that is interrupted by a curb cut or a driveway, it actually takes away several more stalls than it would if it were just parallel parking. So as you build in some of the driveway accesses between First and Helen, certainly staff was surprised to find that the differential between the diagonal parking and the parallel parking was not, in terms of number of stalls, was not as significant as maybe it might thought to be in terms of just looking at diagonal versus parallel parking. And then the other factors, I think, that were of concern were the cost to actually redo fairly recent irrigation, streetscape, trees, things that went in in about 2011, 2012 in that same block there and a reduction of green space, I guess. And also expanding the pavement to be diagonal parking. It does cost something additional with respect to moving street lighting and drainage structures, that sort of thing. So we preliminary, preliminarily anticipated that if there were to be a change from diagonal parking, change to diagonal parking, that that would increase the project cost by about eight to 12%, somewhere in the realm of $400,000 to basically widen the road. It would also leave a fairly narrow amenity or grass strip, about five feet. So really not big enough for boulevard trees to remain or anything like that. So the character of that block would, would change significantly in terms of considering the diagonal parking. So with that, you know, staff just wanted to check in, make sure that if it was going to move forward one way or the other, that this is the time to do that. The designers, you know, have been working again using the revitalization downtown plan as a guide, which is the layout that's on your screen. But because there were those conversations, we just wanted to check in and make sure that there wasn't an opinion against that. And so that's why this is before you tonight for your review, comment, opinion. I'll take any sort of reaction that you might have and, and stand for any questions that you might have at this time as well.
Thanks, Morgan. Rick, you had something right away?
Yeah, I, I pretty strongly favor option one. First of all, I think it allows for a, a nice transition from the residential area further to the west into the downtown area and transitions that to a more active kind of situation and is, is important in that way. The loss of the bus stops, I think, would be something that would be, to me, you know, less desirable, especially with the bus stops that are right near the Polar Ridge, where people could use a bus if they wanted to from Polar Ridge. And the loss of greenery, I think, fits in well with, you know, what kind of a, a feel it has in terms of having it be less concentrated, less active. And let's see. I think the issue of parking also, you know, with the, the existing open space and the likelihood that any new development that occurred would have the op, op, option or opportunity to, to include parking as part of the design of their, their reconstruction or new construction.
And when you say option one, you're talking about the, the one that's in line with the, well, it's, on here, it's just called the 60-degree and parallel.
Yeah, the parallel parking.
Which is in line with the downtown revitalization design.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would agree with Rick, I would lean toward option one. He said everything else that was meaningful.
I would piggyback on it. I think the only overtime, the only time I've ever seen all those stalls filled up is during the car show. And I just think, you know, for 5% of the time, they're full, but otherwise, they're empty. At different times of the day, I've been through there. And I would also second that it's nice to have that green space for parades or the car show. That's some of the more pleasant parts to just sit and hang out with the kids and look at cars versus as you get into the parallel or the angled parking. It gets a little tight and it just doesn't have the same feel. So I would, I would echo what these, these guys are saying.
Here's where, here's where I'd get the business's input.
I think the business input was obtained when the downtown revitalization plan was written. And that's not that old, but there was a big task force that worked on that.
Yeah, that's correct, Madam, Madam Chair. So 2017 timeframe, there were several public meetings, both with the business group and, and to the general public as well too. And so being in conformance with the plan does, I guess, would lend itself to not, you know, opening that up again. We're simply trying to stay in conformance with those planned improvements, which were not finally designed, but they were, they were in concept generally accepted by the public and city council. I think it came before the planning commission as well, if I remember correctly.
Yeah. Okay, Andrew?
Yeah, I, I think probably I'll agree with everyone else. I was a little bit intrigued on the second option because I, I thought the elimination of some of those curb cuts was something that was being proposed and I thought there could be, could be interest there, but I know that could probably cause some, some problems. But, you know, my only thought is, I mean, like you said, Morgan, if, if we're not actually gaining a whole lot of parking by doing it on the diagonal here, I don't really see a whole lot of, you know, advantages to option two. I think, I mean, in my opinion, if we're going to ever add parking, it, it should be, you know, street parking like this where we already have it. And if we can get more, that's great, rather than, you know, taking property somewhere to do it. But yeah, I think based on, you know, your presentation and how you described it, it seems like option one really is the, the right way to go.
Well, I think it matters that it is a transition area between residential and what we call the downtown, you know, the primary part of downtown. So to me, the, the parallel, one of the pluses of that is it just is more pedestrian and bike-friendly. I mean, and just adding more essentially impervious surface and taking away some of the existing green space, I think that does change. I think, Patrick, you said, just changes the whole feel of that area. So, I mean, I certainly am supportive of the option one, no question about that. I just think it fits better and I don't, I don't think there's much to be gained by taking away and making that little strip of green that doesn't really do much. So I think we're all in agreement, Morgan.
I appreciate the comments, commissioners and Madam Chair, thank you very much. I do have one slightly not exactly related item. If, Madam Chair, if you'd entertain maybe just a couple more minutes.
Sure.
Something that is going to be workshopped by the city council on Tuesday. And it just kind of briefly came up or recently came up, so it's not on your agenda. But if I can share my screen here, is that possible, you guys? Can I share my screen?
I'm not sure if you heard me or not, so you should be able to now.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to, can you see our data link GIS map here? Is that visible to the commission?
Yes.
Okay, so I will only take just a couple of minutes. The reason why it's slightly related to our agenda item is because it's on Seventh Avenue. It's actually on the west end of our 2020 improvements, which I'm highlighting here. You can see the north, to the northeast, that's what was just recently completed around the Sentinel Building. Kind of in the middle is what was, I mean, it's not all outlined, but generally, those are the, the portions of the streets that were fully reconstructed. There were some additional streets that were overlaid that are not highlighted. On the very west end of that project, the reason why the road improvement stopped short of the intersection of South Ave and Seventh Avenue and Third Street, which I think some folks refer to that as Five Corners. But that's kind of an interesting intersection there. And in the downtown revitalization plan and in the downtown redevelopment plan, which is being reviewed and updated by task committee currently, at this intersection, and I think in the comp plan too, at this intersection has been contemplated a roundabout for a traffic control improvement at this intersection. Council did authorize staff to look at some preliminary concepts and, and has had discussions with Ramsey County in the, in and around this area. And so there, the, the, nothing has been finalized or there isn't a, a fully formulated design yet for a roundabout and what exactly it would look like. Part of the concept is that it would be a gateway into the downtown area. And if you want more information, certainly I'd refer anyone to the comp plan or to those other two plans that I mentioned before. Bottom line, I was contacted by Ramsey County staff just a couple days ago stating that this particular parcel that is highlighted in red here was a tax forfeit property, that that is available to the county to potentially acquire. And so they asked if the city would be interested because they know that potentially a joint cooperative roundabout, which would, you know, South Avenue is a county road, Seventh Avenue and Third Street are city streets. Anything that would happen there would need to be kind of collaborated on and cooperated on. So, you know, this isn't a very large parcel, it's 50 feet wide, it's about .11 acres. I did check with planning staff, it is not a buildable lot. Ramsey County also owns the lot next to it, this number one here, lot number one, which is a little triangle. And actually, if you can, yeah, so lot number one, which is owned by Ramsey County, is actually a part of our Third Street cul-de-sac. So at any rate, it seems to be an opportunity to maybe provide some additional flexibility with respect to future roundabout improvements, to be able to acquire that parcel either by Ramsey County and then maybe there would be some discussions between the city and the county, how to deal with that later on. I think those are details that could be worked out. But the county wanted to know if we were interested. I had said, knowing in the interest of time, and there is a deadline, that certainly we are interested and I, I would review it with the planning commission and review it with the city council, just to get, you know, your thoughts or feedback, hopefully support. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. I just wanted to make you aware of it. And Ramsey County right now is just currently trying to figure out procedures and next.
Any comments, questions?
Morgan, this is Eric. Is it in any of your, I know you're, you've got some concepts, you, you might not have layouts or anything, but in, in a general sense, to do a proper roundabout, I mean, I'm seeing that there's at least one or two, three, if not four parcels there were, would be impacted. Is it, I'm assuming that any legs would, would, would certainly touch this red property that you're talking about, right? But it, that wouldn't nearly be enough room for a, a full roundabout, is that correct?
Yeah, no, that's correct. I think, you know, this is not going to solve anything, certainly. This particular parcel does maybe create some flexibility with respect to some of the approaches to a roundabout. Just some of, some of the concepts that have been looked at have been a dual roundabout, so two smaller circles as opposed to one bigger one, if you can. And that's specifically because we're at kind of a skewed intersection or potentially other designs might be options as well too. But the other thing that actually is fairly important to consider, but maybe not obvious above ground, is that Excel Gas just recently redid a lot of their facilities on South Avenue. There are some above-ground gas, I don't know what they are, valve regulator stations or things, things that are just right on the, if you can see my pointer, they're kind of right along the boulevard here for Seventh Avenue, within the right-of-way. There were discussions with Excel Gas when they were doing their design and, you know, we let them know that, hey, there might be a roundabout coming here. They made the decision to, to just deal with that when the time comes. And if they need to relocate some of their facilities, they are understanding and okay with that, that it might have to happen at their cost in the future. But I guess what I'm getting at is that this parcel does provide some flexibility or ability to maybe relocate some other utility things out of the way, whether or not it actually is something that contains a piece or a part of a roundabout, that's to be determined. But every little bit, I think, of, of land in and around this area, similar to the triangle that was used. similar to the triangle that was used to create a proper cul-de-sac there for Third Street. You know, I, I think it, it will help the effort. But you're right, you know, it's going to take more than just this to be able to complete that.
No, thank you for that. Thanks for letting me nerd out with you a little bit.
I was right there with you, man.
Anyone else?
That seems like a, a good direction to go, you know, it's forward-looking and, and I think goes a ways in terms of giving some flexibility in terms of what the options might be for that intersection. So I, I like it.
Particularly when we're talking about a lot that's not buildable.
Yeah, agreed.
Maybe if you could redevelop it into something else, but it's not. The only thing I would say, I don't, I'm not a particular fan of twin circles. So I'm hoping if that's the way we go, that's not what we have. I mean, we don't need anything that will confuse people as they're trying to get into the city.
And, and I think.
What signage?
All of the signage and trust, trust the system and everything will be just fine. A couple of weeks, all the complaints will die down.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Still hearing complaints about the Fleet Farm one.
That'll die down.
How long's it been? A year? You're going to say something, Rick?
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I like the, the Fleet Farm one. You know, back to this particular intersection, I think that, that there's a certain amount of barrier to, to getting to downtown through that intersection. And to, you know, to smooth that out so that, you know, it, it's not this kind of unusual stop sign type of thing. I, I, I don't think we make people, drivers less, you know, less comfortable than they are right now. If anything, we probably help.
Yeah, well, and the angles don't help.
Yes.
You know, that's always tricky. So anything that gets rid of those, I think would be helpful.
We, it would make it easier for pedestrians as well too. I, I walk through that intersection all the time with two kids in a stroller and it's, it's not hard, but you kind of have to fight your way, you know, across there to make sure people see you. So, you know, sidewalks would help too, of course.
Yeah, and people get very impatient if they have to wait behind one car. It's like, my goodness. So anyway, it looks like, you know, seems like a good, as Rick said, forward-looking approach.
It's an opportunity. I appreciate the Commission's comments and support. And yeah, we'll, we'll see what the next steps are. There's no guarantee that, that the county or the, the city will be successful on this, but it certainly seems like something that's worth pursuing, at least we'll see if it comes to fruition. So, thank you again.
Does the county have, oh, he's still there. I was just wondering, has the county ever been involved in creating a roundabout yet?
I believe they have. I mean, I, I can't speak for Ramsey County. I know that Washington County is much more aggressive on roundabouts, but I don't know if Ramsey County has had one.
Quite a few, quite a few of them on Frost.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's a county, is that a county road? I don't think it is. As long as you just mentioned that, I'll just mention something totally different. And that has to do with, speaking of the county, or maybe it's not the county, but at any rate, one of the things we talked about when we did the apartment complex there on the anchor site was potentially, you know, the city encouraging that Ramsey County or whoever it needs to encourage to get bus service onto McKnight, you know, regular bus service. And I wonder if we ever made, anybody's ever done any reaching out in that respect? And who would be the appropriate one to do that? Because we've got a lot of housing now right in that area and there's not really good bus service there.
I don't, we have been in contact with Metro Transit in the past for other things. Ironically, they, they have been generally centered around their reevaluation of their ridership numbers on existing stops and actually have resulted in fewer stops or fewer transit stop locations and transit stop locations being removed from their routes. However, and also we know that transit ridership was at probably historic all-time lows in 2020. So they really don't have good data right now to be able to evaluate things. But I think that, you know, with new development and redevelopment, my experience anyway, is that those are opportunities for existing transit lines to be able to figure out if they, if they do need to expand service to be able to address increasing demand with more people moving into a specific area. So it's a really good point. I think that's something that between myself and planning staff, maybe we can figure out if we can get a status update from Metro Transit to see if that's something that they're thinking about on their own or maybe it's just a good reminder from the city to them to take a look at it, given a fairly substantial change in land use in North St. Paul.
Okay.
Over the last couple of years.
Thanks. Okay. Any, anybody else have any random questions? If not, thanks, Morgan. Hope you feel better by Tuesday for sure.
Absolutely. I think I will. Thank you so much.
Okay, let's move on then to our two old business item. One is that, this is just, I requested an update on the downtown seating area furnishing discussion that kind of came up during our joint Planning Commission, EDA meeting, where the mayor said he thought the Planning Commission should kind of help with that.
The reins on that, yes. I don't have information to pass on to you. I was actually a little bit confused. I didn't, I was originally thinking that they were looking for your design input as far as what would be acceptable. But then there was conflicting information that because the proposed furniture that was in the, one of the plans, not the downtown revital, yeah, it was the downtown revitalization plan, had a permanent furniture that was removed due to the budget. And so they are looking for furniture in replacement of that. So I'm, I'm not sure what your role is.
Well, this particular one was primarily for the, the dining option piece. You know, the tables and chairs for like the sidewalk dining areas that were put out.
Okay, so do you need to review the design on that or do we need to find furniture?
Well, he, what he was thinking is just some ideas on what would be appropriate for the downtown area. So I guess you could call that more of a design type thing. Red, I mean, do we want everybody to just get what they want or would we like to just have some?
Parameters around that.
You know, here's what we'd like to see. So that is how I took that. Anybody else come away with a different thought?
I'm trying to think. I think John is the, on the joint meeting, is that John and Rick?
Well, this was the joint EDA-PC meeting where we discussed.
Correct. So there were only a few people that were?
No, it was the whole.
That's the redevelopment.
Yeah, that's the, we're talking about the joint.
Right, right, but, oh, yes, yes, I'm getting on.
Yeah, it really doesn't have anything to do with that.
So everyone was at that, that meeting, because, yes.
That's why I asked if anybody else had a different impression. I didn't think we were going to be writing up any major standards or anything, just kind of getting some.
Ideas together.
Giving some guidance on, you know, what would fit and then potentially, you know, kind of getting some sense of costs because we wouldn't want it to be overly expensive.
For clarification, would you be looking for support from staff to get the costs?
Well, I think that would probably be helpful.
Okay, okay. And then do, should I be responsible for proposing designs as well?
Well, I think we can, don't necessarily think you have to propose them, but I think we could, we could potentially look at what we currently have in any documentation and then just give some generic, again, to me, it's really high level.
Yeah, I, I thought there was some company, I got the impression there were some companies that were producing that kind of thing or there were a lot of places where there were furniture configurations like that.
I believe there are, but there aren't any preferred vendors that we're currently working with. So that would all have to be researched.
Okay, well, maybe you could do a little bit of research on that to see what the vendors might be.
Okay.
And then, then we at least have something to go by because I know the concern was this would be, winter would be the time of year they'd be ordering something.
Sure, sure.
So I think that could just maybe get an update in January.
Okay.
The January meeting?
Yep, can do that.
Thanks. And then the other one would be to get a update from our representatives on the redevelopment master plan task force of what's happening.
Yeah, yeah. Well, let's see, I think, well, we've had two meetings, you know, to start with. And we've been spending some time on just kind of getting a handle on what level of detail we want to go into on, on the master plan review and the reading. And, you know, some worthwhile discussions, but it's preliminary kinds of things. We're also reviewing what exists now in terms of the existing situation, what new development has occurred since the last time the document, when the document was written. As well as looking a little bit at what kinds of properties are likely to redevelop. We've had some discussion about, well, you know, how do we, how do we roll something like this out? Who are the, the stakeholders that need to know about it? Certainly, the business community is a very important, you know, absorber of this information, need, need to see the information. And let's see, I think that's about, do you have anything to add?
No, I think it's a pretty good overview of what we've talked about. There was a lot of discussion at the last meeting on the way about the overall bid for the downtown. Just revisiting of what had been done in the past and re-conforming what we want for the future. And for the next couple of meetings, we'll leave the next one in January. We're going to be looking closer at the existing conditions. We looked at the guidelines as well as the vision, guidelines and principles at this last meeting. So we're going to update those and bring them back to the task force and make sure they're ready. That's been updated as, as we redirect it.
Thank you.
Okay. Then down to reports from staff.
Nothing to report.
Oh, other staff? No, shaking of heads for those of you seated facing this way. Reports from council liaison, oh, she's not here, so reports from Commissioners. I'll start with you, Rick.
Nothing to report.
Patrick? Eric?
I don't have anything to report, but I do have a question. What's the plan for those mulched areas downtown? Is that kind of the purview of redevelopment master plan or are there going to be trees or any landscaping down there?
There was supposed to be landscaping.
There was supposed to be landscaping, but that was cut from the budget at the last, at the end of the, the project, it got cut from the budget. So right now, I'm not certain if there.
Was money put in for the next year though to do that?
Possibly. That's something I'm not sure about.
I saw that in the capital improvement plan.
Okay, we can, I can bring you an update on that at the next meeting as well.
It's a good question. That is really not attractive.
Just a curiosity. It looks, it looks kind of barren, so it'd be nice to see some greenery there, but obviously totally understand the budgetary.
Yeah.
And that is a topic that has come up, you know, in the redevelopment master plan review. That's, you know, that is a big concern that I think there was a real consensus on is that, you know, having more open space slash park kind of areas is important. And what those look like is up in the air.
Not just open space, but when you've got something like that, put something there.
Yeah, right.
To make it look attractive.
Yeah, rather than a look at having it look abandoned, we want it to look nice and attractive and a good first impression.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Thanks. Andrew?
I just have a quick report from the Minnesota Greenstep Cities talk that I attended that Lisa had sent out, so thank you for doing that, Lisa. It was called New Approaches to Parking Management. And it really just talked about mostly, you know, St. Paul's recent approach of eliminating parking minimums completely. But there was a whole lot of, you know, other background information to it. But it was really an interesting seminar to attend now that we're starting to talk about parking. Just some of the quick points they made, you know, sort of two, two areas of impact that parking affect cost and environmental impact. And, you know, each, if you're developing a, you know, housing project, for instance, each parking stall, if it's, you know, outside on a surface, it's, you know, over $3,000 apiece. If it's in a structured, you know, below grade or structured parking garage, it's $50,000 a parking stall. And then there's maintenance costs on top of that, of course. And all those costs, of course, get bundled into the, the full cost of the project, which then in turn raises the cost for housing for that particular project. And of course, you know, lots of environmental impacts from surface lots and structured lots with, you know, runoff and the increased cost of stormwater and the increased heat effect from the additional paving. So they talked about a couple interesting things that some cities are starting to do. The whole idea of uncoupling the cost of parking within a, and again, this really relates mostly to, to affordable housing, but, or housing in general. Uncoupling the cost of the parking portion of that project with the actual construction of the residential portion of it. And what that does is allow the rents to remain affordable. And then the people that need parking can pay for it and the people that don't need it don't need to pay for it and can, you know, the housing costs remain hopefully affordable. And there are cities that are now, you know, writing that in as a requirement for development, housing development, that that, those costs are uncoupled from each other. And they emphasized the importance of bicycle infrastructure, bicycle parking requirements being part of development process. Just like, you know, eliminating or, or reducing parking minimums, you know, increasing bicycle parking requirements ties into all of this. Also, of course, transit infrastructure and, you know, big time pedestrian investments, sidewalks and making sure the pedestrian experience is safe and thought through. And yeah, I think that was about it. I mean, it was, it was a great, a great seminar. And there is a recording of it. I know. I know Elaine has already listened to that as well, too. So if people are interested, I can forward that, uh, email to everyone as well, too, if you want to hear the recording of the full thing, but, thanks.
Do you have that, that link to the, oh, you don't? Okay.
Sure, yeah. I guess, Lisa, I'll forward it to you and then you can, um, get it to everybody else. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the big, the interesting piece of the approach to me is that is considering parking as part of transportation planning, because that's what it is. You know, so the bike, the pedestrian, the vehicle, transit itself, plus the places you put those vehicles for short-term storage. And that, the parking aspect of it doesn't always get as much rigorous attention as some of the rest does, so. I think you'll enjoy listening to it. You can skip right to the end and you can hear Andrew speak on, from his little subgroup.
They put me on the spot without really letting me know. But no, it, actually, the, you know, it was a, it wasn't a, a large group, but there were people from, uh, at least in the group I was in, um, uh, I think there was a planning staff from Richfield, um, I forget where else, but, um, there was, actually, a lot of people were very interested in North St. Paul, because, um, I talked a lot about bike infrastructure and our proximity to the Gateway Trail and how that's a tremendous asset to what we have here and something that we really want to try to engage more. And, uh, so there's a lot, people were very interested in that. Also, the, when I brought up the fact that, you know, we have big car show here all summer long and that parking in itself is, is part of that, and so we do need to sort of provide parking in order to, um, facilitate this very large event that we have all summer long. So it's, there's a lot of unique and interesting things happening here and there was a lot of interest in that.
Okay. Al?
Question for Andrew. Were, were they suggesting that the developers would totally disconnect the parking from the housing development? That it would be actually two different projects, or is it just the residents would have the option to separate parking from their rental of a property?
I think it's, it wouldn't necessarily be two different projects. It's more in the financial understanding of what the construction cost is, so that, the, you know, they gave a, they gave a, um, a number, I think, you know, there was something on average of, um, a typical, you know, 80-unit apartment building, um, almost $200 a month of rent and each unit is actually paying for parking typically, even if those people aren't using that.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's more about taking that cost out and keeping the rents based solely on the residential portion of the construction and the parking would then be paid for, yes, extra by the residents that would-
By the users.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
My understanding, that's how the Sentinel is set up as well. There's one, no, you're not required or limited to a parking space, um, so it's first come, first served. So if someone goes in there and wants three parking stalls and they want to pay for that, then they will get three parking stalls until they're-
At a cost.
Gone. At a cost, of course, yes.
Yeah, which makes sense.
Okay. Al?
As you know, this is my last meeting. I assume you're going to replace me.
Hmm?
I assume you're going to replace me.
Well, I don't know that they can replace you. We'll probably have a new, another planning commissioner, but-
I'd strongly recommend you get somebody from the business community.
Oh.
We have some representatives, just like the city council has now.
Okay.
Yeah, I also have my sign.
And extra Fisher happy bag for a county meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd known enough, we could have had a party. Yeah, there you go. Okay, I just have a couple, few quick things. Got the parking workshop out of the way. I'll just remind people that the holiday hop is this coming Saturday, you know, so get yourselves downtown. And somebody, was it you, Patrick Mary, I think, mentioned the Brothers Bistro? And there was, if you didn't see it, there was some social media going on, some posts this, what, Tuesday or Wednesday, um, talking about, we need to get out and support them because they're struggling and they've been swamped, then, in response to that, so I'm just, you know, kind of reminding folks, if you haven't been there, try to, try to make it there. They, they also do the takeout, so you can do that if you, you know, want to eat it at home, but-
I was just thinking about that, because my wife and I just, uh, we, we found that we weren't going to downtown places regularly. So she got this idea of rolling a die. We were going to go to each of the bars. There are six. And we were selecting which one. So we were walking downtown from our house and, uh, going to the bars. So we've now hit all six bars, but then I was thinking that we need to do the same thing with things like Brothers Bistro.
Yes.
Make a, you know, a once a week or once every two weeks, we're going there for lunch or-
Right.
We need to make an effort to do that, to support those businesses.
Yeah.
I'm one of the people in town that have wanted good restaurants in town for a long time, so I better put my money-
So you haven't been there yet?
I haven't had a chance, because I've been vacationing and doing other things since I opened.
It's good. It's good food. It's good food.
I was there for lunch today, actually.
Did you? What?
I had a cheeseburger that had a hash brown on top of it. It was absolutely delicious.
It's health food, in other words.
It was great, no, and, you know, I, it was sort of an odd time. It was three o'clock, so it was a little bit late, but they, they still had, you know, six or seven tables full, so I think it's, they're doing well.
Yeah, I think that helped. It's just, you know, everybody goes at once kind of in response, but then the, the key is you have to keep going back. Yeah, I was thinking on Saturday morning, I might have to try to get in there early before the holiday hop actually starts, if you want to get anything. But I do know they have a special, as do, as does Newman's. Both are for burgers, uh, during the holiday hop, during lunch hours. Anyway, but I just thought I'd pass that on, so tell your friends and family, too. Get on down. And I think that's all I had, other than to say, everybody have a Merry Christmas. Al, again, enjoy your retirement from the planning commission. We'll watch for you at the council meeting, so be sure to notify us when that's going to happen, Lisa.
I do have a comment. Um, I wasn't sure if you were going to share the email that Lisa Wong forwarded earlier today. She apologized for not being able to be here, but there's, um, two, four messages that she wanted to pass along.
Oh, I didn't get that, or I didn't read it.
That's okay. John Stark, the, will start as the new city manager, and he comes from a planning background and has been the, at the city of Richfield in the community development. Um, he will be an incredible addition and I hope the commission can, I said, I don't have my, the right glasses on for this. I hope the commission can build a strong relationship. Uh, the second thing, the city engineer, Morgan Dolly, is investigating a pedestrian-friendly solution to Ariel Street. Since it isn't slated for a full reconstruction, there may be a need to find an alternate, uh, alternative to the, to a sidewalk. And the third thing is the redevelopment master plan task force reviewed some guiding principles, discuss who the primary audience is, which would be the internal alignment of city council, EDA, and planning. And she said, I'll refer, I'll defer to Brandy, um, Commissioners Rick Gelman and Vice Chair John Monge to contribute on their perspectives further, and we had done that. Uh, and then the last thing is our arts and culture commission met with the Veterans Park Commission, and there may be a need for discussion in the future about trail access to a potential monument project, which is, they're looking to put in a, um, what do they call it? A memorial rock?
Ooh.
If you're familiar with those, they're huge, like 10, 10,000-pound boulders, um, that have really nice, uh, painted artwork on them, and then possibly a gazebo over that to protect it. So that was the project that they discussed.
Where would they be thinking about doing that?
Veterans Park. Yes, but not, they don't want to take away from what's already existing.
Right.
So it'd kind of be on a path somewhere, um, possibly on the side or behind or something is what they're proposing, so.
Okay.
Just in the beginning stages.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I hadn't realized she'd sent one. I had, didn't check my email.
No, no problem whatsoever.
Okay, then I think that's all I have, so unless anybody has anything else, our next meeting will be January 6th, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Excellent. Motion by Al. Did you want to second your own motion, too, Al? You probably would if you could. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're adjourned at, oh, let's see, eight, whatever, 53.